Does anybody have a motion in the minutes?
I make a motion to be accepted as.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I make a motion tonight, ask you a question.
Sure.
I'd like to amend the agenda.
You do?
Yes.
Okay. In what way?
I'd like the agenda to be amended so after the election of officers, we have a parliamentary procedure presentation.
Do I have a second on that motion?
I second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. New business. This is a public meeting of the zoning variance request to allow a daycare in R1 J-18-0001 at 1202 Sheridan Avenue. Is anybody here on that behalf?
Here in your address.
Uh-oh. My address is 3232 Glenwood, Saginaw, Michigan, 4601. And I'm here to see if I can get a zoning for a daycare on Sheridan at Water 1202. Um, I've been working for 20 years at Saginaw IZ Head Start and I've worked at various daycares. Um, it's always been my dream to have a daycare, own a daycare since I, since I had my first grandchild, which is would be unnamed, LaMaya's Childcare Learning Center. Not just a daycare. It would be ages from six weeks to 10 years old and they would be cared for quality care and learning care.
Okay. This request is to hold a public hearing to allow variance at this location.
Okay.
At 1202 Sheridan Avenue. Do I have any comments on her statements? Any questions?
Do you have possession of the building now?
Um, I have possession. I am, well, I'm in the process of doing a, doing, I'm in the process of with Mr. George and doing a lease. We're renting, we're gonna meet next week to do a lease for renting.
So it's not your building?
No, it's not my building. It's a, it's a, it's owned by someone else. No, it's not mine. I'm just, I'll be renting the building. In the process of renting, we will, I will have an option to buy.
Aye.
Mm-hmm. Yes, I will.
Now, how many children are you applying for with?
Um, I'm applying.
I didn't see that on here.
Oh, uh, at least, um, probably around 20 to-
Oh, six or less, is that it? Yeah.
It, it, for the center, this would be a center, it would be at least 20 to 50 kids. And it depend on what the state, um, what the state lets me, uh, get approved for, how many children.
Did you say 20 to 50?
Yes, 20 to 50 children. Not at one time, though. At a period of time between the hours of 6:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m., Monday through Saturday.
So you're doing a full staff?
Yes, I would be having a full staff. I'll have around eight, eight to 10 staff and myself. I would be the director. I would have assistant directors and the rest would be caregivers, a preschool teacher, a toddler teacher, and probably an older teacher for the older kids, nine to 10.
What's the square footage of this one?
Um, I didn't bring that. I had it, but I didn't bring it.
Okay.
I got the map, but.
This is the old grocery store, right?
Yes, it's the old grocery store. I think it's either Miles or something.
Right. That's been there a while.
So I didn't bring the footage. I just, uh-
If I remember what, right?
I got the map.
One part of the building was 1250 and the other one was a smaller area. So somewhere around 17, 18.
And the state will determine the number of children by the square footage of the building, correct?
And the yard, too, though.
And the yard, too.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Okay.
Is there anybody else in, uh, in the group that would like to comment on this application? I'll ask a second time. Is there anybody that would like to comment on, on this application? Would you by chance like to comment on 1202 Sheridan, the application for variance? Three times. All right. Uh, is, is there any motion at all?
I make a motion after the approved case J-180001 for allowance of the daycare facility.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Continuing on, we have case J-18002. Uh, now, this is a public meeting to allow variance. This is at 2026 South Washington. The parcel is located in a R2 two-family residential district. And it's just north of the convenience store that is located at 2034. Property is owned, R2 two-family residential. The lot is currently owned by the Saginaw County Land Bank. Now, this is the public hearing to allow variance for a convenience store to be constructed at 2026 South Washington in an R2 two-family residential district. Uh, is there anybody in the crowd that wants to discuss this? Is there?
Does that represent people in session who's going to work at the property?
Okay.
We need your name, please.
Gary Kowalski.
And your address.
4451 McCarty Road. There's already a convenience store on the adjacent lot and what we're looking to do is purchase the lot behind or to the north of the existing and build the new store there. Then the old store will be pretty much torn down. That will be made into additional parking for the store. So it's already an establishment, already a party store.
So this is for the owners of that party store existing?
That's correct. Yes. Yep.
Any questions of?
What is the probability of the person not getting the land from the Saginaw Bank? Land Bank?
Well, they're hoping they do. You know, they've already gone into that stage of the process. They just don't hold the property yet in their hands. But they're hopeful that, you know, they can purchase the property so they can improve their, you know, their store, make a nice, modern store, nicer for the community, more parking, obviously, for, you know, the customers.
So this is a question for staff. So since they don't own the property at this point and we rezoned the property and they don't get the property, it will be zoned for that even the Land Bank or the Land Bank can reverse it back? What happens?
No, if you approve the variance, not a rezoning, but the variance, that property would still be allowed for the same type of business. Even if they don't go through with the purchase? If, if the Land Bank were to sell it to someone else, they would have that, they would have that opportunity.
Because the variance goes with the property.
Right. Right. Good question.
Then I just had a question. If the Land Bank does not agree to that, will that existing store remain the way it is then?
More than likely, yes. I can't answer that. I'm not the owner, but more than likely, because he's been in business there for, for many years. He's just looking to improve his establishment.
Sure.
Really won't change much, except he'll have a little bit bigger store than he has now, little more convenient, space spacious, you know, inside.
This is also where all the residents notified?
Everyone within 300 feet were notified.
Was there any feedback, though?
I had one person who called and just wondered what the postcard was about. And there is one person in the audience who got the postcard as well. Thank you.
Thanks for your time.
Is there anybody else that wants to comment on, on the variance request at 2026 South Washington? When you come to the podium, give us your name and address.
Good evening. My name is Kareem Hogan. Address is 507 Ketchum, Saginaw, Michigan. Um, I'm not for or against the item of discussion at the moment, but as a property owner in the area, and this probably will come further along in the process, I know parking and entry and exiting from the current establishment is sometimes challenging, given that it's on the corner and the parking lot doesn't have a enormous amount of space. Um, I just ask that that be something that be considered by the contractors when, if, if and when the new establishment comes to fruition. It would be nice to have a, a facility that looks nice to help beautify the city of Saginaw, of course. And, um, that's pretty much it. I was really coming to learn more about the topic. Um, the flyer that I received didn't really have much detail, so I'm learning that this process is gonna be ongoing. Thank you.
Thank you.
This is a question for staff.
Any questions for this man?
No, this is for staff.
I have a question for staff.
Go ahead.
Will this have to go, if this is approved, does this go to planning when it gets to the next stage of the building?
It will have to go to planning and because it's a new building, my understanding is it will also have to go to the Liquor Control Commission again.
So what he's saying is everything that you ask about entrances and that will go to another board and those will all be approved by the city. This is just about the property, what can be on the property?
I have a concern. If this falls flat with the Land Bank, et cetera, through the process, here we're giving somebody a carrot, a diamond carrot, actually. We're giving somebody property that already has the variance and it could be some person who, I hate to say it, might have some illegal activity within their store or their business, you know? And I, I don't agree with this for this, for the point, uh, to the point of let the person get through the Land Bank process first, then come before us with a presentation for a variance. Cause if, if we give it back, if they lose it, they, no interest is occurred or they lose it in the process, what's gonna happen? We're gonna give somebody free will to do whatever they want on that property because we made a variance to our two district, you know? I don't agree with that.
They, they won't be able to do whatever they want. It's whatever the variance motion says. The other thing is, the other thing is, is if they, they wanna do this step first because if you don't grant a variance, why do they want the land?
Why didn't they come here this evening? Why didn't you send the contractor?
Well, the representative was here. Now, I can tell you that there was a police report done on this property and there was one violation. And that violation was recent, but it was a domestic violence dispute in the parking lot that really didn't pertain to the store. Otherwise, they have not had any, any police calls to that address. Now, when you say it has to go along with what we approve as a variance, in other words, we're, we're making a variance for a party store? Yes. Somebody can't come in there with a car wash? No. Gotcha. Any other questions?
And they have to go through the liquor-
Control.
-control. They have to go through the-
Planning Commission.
They have to go through building inspection and all that.
Yep.
So why are we doing this when they haven't even purchased the property from the Land Bank?
I wouldn't purchase property on South Washington if I didn't have a purpose for it. I'm not trying to be, you know, uppity, but that, if, if I'm not using that property, why would I purchase it?
The store is, um-
Very active?
Very active. Um, they have very good ice cream in the summer time. And, um, I lived at 1918 South Washington.
Okay.
And when my children were coming up, some of the neighbors in the neighborhood had credit accounts at the store, you know? They've always been like a footstool in the business world where they accommodated the neighborhood they were in. I did like that about them, but I don't agree with going through the Land Bank. It hasn't gone through, couldn't actually, if it falls flat, we're giving somebody else a party store.
We're not giving them a party store. We're giving them the ability to build a party store to compete with that one.
We're giving somebody else a location-
Yeah.
-that can be a party store. They, they, they already, since they already have the variance, you know, I don't agree with this. I, I really don't agree with it.
Okay. Is there anybody else in, in the gallery that would like to comment on, on the variance at 2026 South Washington? I'll ask one more time. Is there anybody in the gallery that wants to make any statements about the variance at 2026 South Washington? Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion that we allow variance for a new convenience store, 2026 South Washington, to replace the one at, at Store, 2034, South Washington.
Do I have a second?
Support.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries. Oh, yeah. But we, oh, that goes before the election or after?
Before.
Before the election.
Correct.
Okay. We're gonna have parliamentary procedure.
Appreciate that. I'm Janet Santos, Saginaw City Clerk. Good to see you this evening. I have my deputy clerk with me, too. Her name is Chris Bowlesman. She's gonna hand out, um, the same thing, the presentation that I'm handing to you so you can see it up close and make some notes on it if you would like to. One thing we're doing this is that all our boards and commissions for the city are receiving the same parliamentary procedure training that you're receiving this evening. There wasn't record of them having the training or anything, so we wanna improve on that step, so that's why I'm here. And also, it's gonna help us to comply with the work we're doing on becoming a redevelopment-ready certification for the community. Let me get my remote here. I like this slide and I like to start out with it because when you look at this group of individuals, there's the diversity there which matches our community. And they have to communicate, number one, what's their goal? What do they wanna do? Where do they wanna move forward to? They have to communicate that with each other. They have to work as a team to reach that goal, just like what the board does to reach a goal, discussion, talk about it, where we're gonna go from here. And if one person on that team becomes, you know, a little bit weak and decisive, you kinda have to slack the other up, pick up that slack, explain where we're still going cause one weakness there, they're just gonna fall in the water. So that really takes strength, determination, and effort to get onto that flotation device and to stand on it. And I really like how that portrays teamwork for me. So we're gonna talk about meetings. Meetings which you're having this evening, this sets and maintains a professional tone. That's what you wanna set off right away for your meetings. And you wanna use professional titles, titles when you're talking to each other, like you said to staff, Mr. Faust's staff, um, you talk to each other cause you're board members. So you say board member for SIGLIO, board member WEB, um, those are your titles. You wanna announce your procedures so that the people that are here, the public that's present, understands what's going on, they follow the agenda, have copies of agendas for them. One way that you can do this is when you get together and start your meeting is through a welcome. You welcome the public that's present, you announce, um, the agenda, welcome, uh, if you do a pledge, those type of things. Public input must be on your agenda, so you announce that, invite the public to the podium, they speak on any topic they want, and they're done. And then when you get to your public hearing, which I believe you just conducted a couple of them, you announce that public hearing, you go into the hearing, you have to ask for comments three times for a public hearing, no one else comments further, you close your public hearing. That takes a separate motion to close your hearing. You vote on that, closure, closed. Then you go into discussion on what you wanna do with the variance or what was the topic of that hearing. Then you decide, take your action. You wanna use your agenda so that you're structured, everyone knows what's going on, what your plan is, what the order of business is so that you don't miss any items. So we know that a meeting is official gathering, so you can transact your business for the city. Open Meetings Act, this is their description, which a quorum is present so that you can legally render a decision and take your action. In a quorum, we wanna be sure that quorum, when you transact your business here, that you have a majority of your members so that you can take your legal action. You can still hold a meeting without a quorum, you just can't take legal actions, you can't vote on any motions. So there's a difference there. You can still have a meeting without a quorum, you just can't take action during that meeting. You can still have discussion on your items. So the meeting, we go to parliamentary procedure so that our meetings flow in a certain order. There's rules to follow so that we have that order and we let the public know what we expect with their conduct for this meeting. Public input, that's when they can come up and talk to you. When you're not in public input or a public hearing calling for comments, they're just a witness, they're participating by observing. The action then is the board members. So we wanna talk about the rules that you have to follow as a board. There's a structured hierarchy of what you have to follow first. First, it's the Constitution, federal and state constitution. You have to be sure you're honoring that. You have to know what the laws and the regulations are, particularly the statutes and the public act that you have to follow. For the Zoning Board of Appeals, the Enabling Act, that's your act that you act under. That's what gives you your authority. If you have bylaws, you have to follow your bylaws. And then, for parliamentary procedure, you go to Robert Rules of Order. That's the last thing that tells you your procedure and your process. So let's get into motions. There's main motions, that's what brings a business before you. Subsidiary motions, those assist your main motion. Privileged motions, talk about the special matters. And bring back motions, that returns a motion back to the board. And incidental motions relate to pending business. Yes, ma'am? We'll get to that.
Okay.
We will, absolutely, cause that, that is a good one and sometimes confusing one.
Right.
Right. So here's your motion sheet. I wanted color code them so you know what your main motions are, subsidiary and privilege. So the black main motion, there's only one that can be a main motion. These are in order of lowest to highest ranking. So really, the low guy is first. Your main motion is your main, how do I wanna say it? That's what you deal with first. You have to start with your main motion. Everything goes from there. So you're gonna start with your main motion, which is the lowest ranking, and then you have the other motions that take precedence over your main motion. So you're familiar with this. You just made a couple motions and acted on it. A member makes a motion, correct? Another member seconds the motion. And we use second, especially in our minutes, because the main motion is first, and then another board member is second. Usually, they say, "I support." Well, you're really giving the second to it, to bring it to the board. The main motion, if you make a motion, one of your members, that belongs to the motion maker. After you get a second to that motion, then the motion belongs to the whole board. It is no longer an individual's motion. It belongs to the board after that. The chair tends to maybe repeat that motion for clarity, make sure it's all clear for everybody to know what you're voting on. When you make a motion, you make it in the positive word format. This way, everyone knows if you vote yes, you're approving it. And if you vote no, it will be denied. We don't make motions in the negative and then vote yes to vote a da. You know what I mean? You have to word it in the positive so that no means no, yes means yes. The chair recognizes any of the members to speak when you ask for a discussion after we have a second. You have to allow for discussion on it. Someone might have a thought or, you know, leaning one way or the other, needs clarity in their own mind on that motion, so you have to allow for discussion. The chair recognizes each member to speak in turn. All the members should speak once first before another member speaks twice. Chair asks for any further discussion? If there is none, then you ask for a vote on that motion. It's either through the chair or staff. And then you state the results of that motion. Motion is either approved or it's denied. So we're gonna use this example motion right here as we move forward with the other type of motions that you can have. So our example is, I move to approve the purchase of a new sign for not more than $100. So someone has made that motion, we have a second on it. Now it belongs to the whole, whole board. We'll use this as our example. So we have the main motion out there. Now we're gonna get into a subsidiary motions. One of the most popular or, or most used motion after a main motion is to amend it. So say we, we have the motion to buy the sign for not more than $100. We got a second, we're in discussion. Well, through this discussion, jeez, is $100 enough to buy the sign we want? We're getting a certain size. The last time we checked on that, it costs more than $100. So someone makes an amendment, jeez, I think we should amend it to increase that spending limit from $100, not to exceed $200. So that's gonna be our example here for our amendment. So now we have amend motion, we have a second to that amendment, they, someone's agreeing with that. So we have, I move to amend the main motion to purchase- So we have, "I move to amend the main motion to purchase a new sign for not more than $100 by raising the spending limit to $200." That's the amendment. Any discussion on that? Go through your discussion point? No more discussion, you take a vote. So what you're voting on is this amendment motion, the subsidiary motion. Now if that passes or fails, then you still have the main motion guy out here, right? Then you have to vote on that. Any questions on that? Good. That's excellent. Just remember, it's a separate motion when you want to amend a motion. You have to have a second and then allow for discussion. It must be voted on. Then you consider your main motion. Another subsidiary motion is postpone indefinitely. So when you're in your discussion, you're kind of not sure where you want to go on this, you don't have clarity, you just don't like the idea of buying the new sign, you don't want to spend that amount of money, you're not sure, you're not ready to commit to a decision or a vote on it, you can do a motion to postpone indefinitely. That pretty much takes that motion out of your meeting and puts it in your pocket. It's gone. But remember, when you have that type of a motion, which our example is up here, you still have to vote on it. As long as someone seconds that subsidiary motion, discussion, vote on it, and if it's approved, it is postponed, taken away from your meeting. Then you don't have to vote on that main motion. Just took care of it.
That's what you do when we table.
No.
No.
We're not there yet.
Okay.
No, we're not. And I'm glad you asked that because that's where a lot of people get confused with postpone, table. There's two different types of postponement motions. This one is postpone indefinitely. And then we're going to get to postpone for a certain time. That's coming up next. So this is used when you don't want to make a decision on this item. You want to postpone indefinitely, not deal with it. Way to say it.
How do you bring it back up?
And we will.
Is that coming?
It is coming, absolutely. That's an excellent question. So here's your postpone to a certain time. You want to postpone it but not because you don't want to deal with it, don't want to make a decision on it, just don't like it. This one is you want to postpone it to a certain time, which you can. You can postpone it to the next meeting. So if you made a motion tonight, you could postpone it till your March meeting. You can't go beyond that March meeting. You've got to deal with it again. So if you find something through your discussion that you want more information on, a little more research, this would be in order. Postpone to a certain time. Somebody's not present that you thought would be, for whatever reason, postpone to the next meeting. State your certain time in your example. "I postpone the consideration of the motion to purchase the new sign not for more $100 until the next regular meeting, March 7, 2018." And that's how your minutes would read. May not be the exact way you say it, but your staff is good. He'll put it in the minutes the proper way. This is not lay on the table. This is postponing it to another time, another meeting. It's taken out of this meeting.
Which would be the next meeting.
You can't go past that next meeting when you postpone to a certain time. Here's your lay on the table motion. We're in the same meeting, you're discussing. Someone's not here, you need more information, Mike's going to send someone out to get something, you know, it kind of comes up in your discussion, that's an option. So what you're going to do then is, "I move to lay on the table the motion to purchase a new sign for not more than $100." Get the second, vote on it. It's not debatable, there is no discussion, I'm sorry. When you lay it on the table, it needs the second, so it comes to the board. It's not debatable. You have to vote on it, but it stays in the same meeting because you're laying it on the table means you're just going to take it off of this table and put it over here. It's still in your meeting. So if you think of that, taking that motion, you put it over here on the table. It's still on your agenda, you're still going to have to deal with it.
So if I wanted clarity, I would postpone till next meeting?
You can postpone, yes, to next meeting. That'd be a certain time.
But lay on the table is, I'm trying to duck the issue completely then?
No. Lay on the table, you're still going to deal with it in the same meeting.
Oh, okay. In the same meeting.
In the same meeting, yes. Postpone indefinitely is taken away, doesn't have to come back. Postpone to a certain time, next meeting, you'll deal with it at the next meeting. Lay on the table, you're going to deal with it in the same meeting.
Okay, that's where we had the downfall. Because every time, like when I was at City Council, when they table something, you never take that.
Yeah.
Very selfish.
And that is a confusing one, but they're so different. And I can say that because I've been working with it for 30 years, but they are different. They mean different things.
So when you table a motion, you just table it for the meeting you're in?
Yes.
And it has to be resolved one way or the other?
In this, you have, yes. Mm-hmm. We'll show how to take it off the table in a second here. But right now you-
But what if you don't? That's why I think that's-
Your staff is going to remind you. You have this on the table, you have to refer back to that, yes.
Okay.
Yeah. Absolutely. Your staff will remind you. Because yeah, you go on to the other business, it's easy to forget because you're focusing on the other business and discussing other items, so, yeah. Good questions. Here's another subsidiary motion, to refer. "I move to refer the main motion to purchase the new sign not more than $100 to support staff," or you're going to say, "to Mr. Faust," and request a report back to the board. You don't have to say when, you don't have to-
So this doesn't have to come up next meeting? That can be indefinite?
You're referring it, yeah. You're going to give the staff time to look into buying the sign.
So you're giving us-
Say you want additional quotes, you want to know more about the size. Do we want yellow? Do we want blue? Do we want green? I mean, those are items of discussion because it's not in the main motion yet. So you want to refer back to Mr. Faust. He'll get the details for you. So that's what this motion means.
So instead of using the word table, we should use refer.
Well, it depends on what you want to do with the topic item. Lay on the table means you're just giving time to wait till someone gets here with that information. You were waiting for me to come for the presentation, you were going to lay it on the table if I wasn't here. Then I come, then we'll take it off the table. Refer is to get more information. You're referring it back to more research. You're not ready, you don't feel like you have enough information to make a vote or a decision.
If, if we were expecting Chris, is it, to be here, but she wasn't here yet, we would lay it on the table and then Mike would say, when we're just getting ready to leave, well, what about the motion we laid on the table?
Absolutely.
Well, Chris is not here, so now we defer it? Refer.
You can postpone it to the next meeting.
Or postpone, okay.
That would be my recommendation and probably Mr. Faust too.
Right. Okay.
Yeah, good scenario.
I guess it's starting to clarify.
Good scenario, yeah, I like that. Very good. Limit time of debate. This one's not used very often, but when you know you have a large topic, subject, something that's going to impact the city, you have a lot of public here, you may want to limit time of debate. This is your discussion, is what I'm referring to when I say debate. Discussion of the board members on a motion. That's what you want to do. You either limit their time or extend their time. It requires two-thirds vote, which you have six members, so it would be four yes votes. The motion should be made, this motion should be made before your discussion begins. So let's say you have your main motion to buy the sign, right? That's up here. And you have a second before the chair takes you into that discussion. If someone makes the motion, "I want to limit the time of debate to three minutes for each board member just to talk on three minutes," then Mr. Faust will time them three minutes, but you have to have a second to that. Then you have to have four people say yes, because you're taking their right of discussion and debate away from them. So it requires extra things to be approved, extra voting.
This is on your side of it. This isn't about this, but what about the audience? Can you limit the time they talk like City Council does?
That would be for public, oh, absolutely. And that's what you want to do in your bylaws.
Yeah.
But if you're going to do it for certain meetings on this topic, absolutely you have the right to do that. I would take a vote, make that a motion. "I move to limit time of public input to a certain time, three minutes, five minutes, whatever you want. Get a second on it. If there's any discussion, take your vote."
Then you can limit the time?
Yes.
Okay, got it.
Yes. So that's just a good tool to remember. It's a tool you can use. And I'm sure that Mr. Faust would know that is a topic that's really going to have a large impact, we're expecting a lot of public, et cetera. He could maybe present that idea to you, have it on your agenda, you know, to maybe set it up that way. Another subsidiary motion is move the previous question. So what this means is you use it to end discussion and vote. You have your main motion, second, you're in discussion and you're talking. We didn't limit the time. And you're talking. Now they're starting to say the same thing over. Okay, I've heard that five times. You kind of get to that point. So someone can make a motion for the previous question. Sometimes they say, "I call the question." That's the same thing here. That means enough is enough. We've heard enough, I'm ready to have a vote taken on this topic. It does require two-thirds vote. So if someone makes that motion, you get the second, you can't debate it, but you need the two-thirds vote because what you're doing is taking the debate away now for the board members. That's why you have to have the majority.
So if our quorum is five, we need four votes?
Mm-hmm. Absolutely. Yes. Yes. So that's when you just want to put the subject to rest, you want to deal with it, we're ready, let's vote. Is that clear?
We've talked long enough, let's go.
Yeah, okay. I'm going. Was that a motion?
Isn't that kind of what you're getting at though?
Absolutely. Yeah, yeah. And you've been asking your questions right along, so I, any other questions on this for clarity? Okay.
Just to clarify the time, the time, the question I asked previously. Do you do that at every meeting, the limit, like, take, for instance, like tonight, when the room's full like it is now? I'm kidding.
But it can get that way.
Some issues, some issues have come up with rooms.
Yes, I'm getting, I'm just-
Yeah.
So can you limit the time per meeting or just in the bylaws?
You can definitely do it within your bylaws, as long as the public's aware of that. You have to have it approved bylaws by your board. It doesn't speak to that in your Enabling Act, Public Act 110. I don't think, it doesn't cover that. That's your right. So if you have bylaws, I would definitely get it in there. If you don't, consider some bylaws. If not, you would have to make the motion at every meeting to do that, to agree to that.
Well, you can do that at every meeting.
You could. But for public input, why wouldn't you just make it a rule, approved bylaw?
So if you do that in the bylaws, who does that go, what would be the next step from that? Would it have to be approved by council or would we just do that?
I'd have to do some research on that, but I believe under the act, I think you would have that strict authority.
Okay, I would like-
But I would want to double check with city attorney of-
Definitely like that.
Yeah.
Because you're under the state statutes.
Yes.
Zoning statutes.
Right.
Okay.
Right.
City, state.
But yeah, that's definitely something to consider because it is a handy tool. You'd rather have it in place and not need it than not have it in place and wish you did.
Exactly.
Okay. Good. So we're back to the bring back motions. Something you asked for, right? So we had the motion to lay it on the table. So Mr. Faust, he remembers that's on the table, right? You still have to deal with it in the same meeting. The bring back motion is to take it from the table. So he reminds you have, you know, an item laid on the table. Yes, you do. Now you need a motion to take it from the table, to bring it back to the board. So you move, remove it from the table, bring it back. "I move to take from the table the motion to purchase the new sign not for more than $100."
You still need a second and approve, vote.
You need a second, you got to vote.
Okay.
Are we ready to take it from the table? Someone may think you're not ready. That's up to the board. So that's how you lay it on the table and take it off the table. Just remember, you have to always clear the table in the same meeting. Okay. Reconsider. You can reconsider a motion. It's used to vote again on a previously motion that was decided. Doesn't have to be in the same meeting, it could be from a previous meeting. It only, oh, sorry, yes, applies in the same meeting or a previous meeting. Thank you. Got that. So the maker of this motion must have voted on the prevailing side. So if the motion was approved, whoever makes this motion to reconsider should have voted in favor of the motion. If the motion was denied, the maker of this motion would have had to vote no. That help you?
So, we've got another member, George Bush, who's not here today, and we are reconsidering this. He can't make a motion on this.
Right, he didn't vote on it.
He didn't vote on it.
Correct.
Right.
He could second the motion.
If, okay. He could second.
He could second it.
But he can't, he can't-
He can't be the maker.
Maker.
Correct.
And he can vote today because he's here, but he couldn't make it. Okay.
Yes. You have it.
Now you brought up something on if somebody voted no and they make a motion-
If the motion was denied.
If it was denied.
Yes.
They would have to have been one-
However that motion prevailed. If it was denied motion or if it was approved, the maker should have voted on the denial or in favor. Doesn't mean the motion was approved to reconsider. It could have been a motion that was denied.
Okay. If it was approved?
If it was approved, then you should have voted yes on that motion in order to make this one.
Okay. Gotcha.
Mm-hmm. And if it was denied, I would have had to vote no in order to make this a motion. Yeah. So let's say we have the reconsiderer motion out here and we have the second. You still have to vote on this motion to reconsider. Maybe not everyone here is going to agree that we should reconsider that motion. So you have to vote on the motion to reconsider. That brings the original motion in the language it was stated in to begin with back to you as your main motion.
With a two-thirds vote?
Then you discuss that, yes.
Okay.
No, this does not require two-thirds vote. Sorry. A reconsiderer does not require two-thirds majority. It just is a simple majority vote.
Oh, okay. I see that in the, underneath, yeah. Bring back motion again, rescind it.
Rescind. Well, let's go there right now for you since you're there. This is when you're going to go, oh man, whoops. So, this is used to cancel a previously approved motion. You want to rescind it. You're thinking about rescinding it. Not quite sure you did the right thing. This requires a majority vote to rescind because now you're talking about taking the motion away to rescind it, like it never happened.
Okay. On tonight's case, you heard Jones Webb was not in favor. Okay, now, they can't get this land. So now we can talk about rescinding that variance. Am I correct or not?
No, because it was approved.
Sorry, approved. It's got to be the same meeting.
Sorry, approved.
Sorry, the government, sorry. It's already done, just.
Oh, okay. It's got to be in the same meeting.
Right.
Never mind. I was thinking that that.
Well, and because.
No, it does not have to be in the same meeting to rescind.
But that can't be rescinded. We'll just do now.
It's already approved.
Correct.
For that particular case.
Right.
But what if he can't get that property?
Can't rescind it.
Can't rescind it.
You already signed the paper.
You already signed the paper to give somebody.
Okay, no, I'm agreeing with that. I just, I just thought this was an example.
Well, one idea, one idea to protect you from that, you could make that contingent upon the final sale.
We could have done that, yeah.
Yes.
But that's why when I, and that's not even part of this, but that's why when I asked if they did get it, it would still remain the same and he seemed to indicate that it would be, that they're just going to drop it then, I assume.
Well, the variance stays with the property, correct?
Right.
Right.
So whoever.
We could have made a contingent on.
Whoever eventually gets that property has that variance already.
Just gave away.
What are they going to use it for? You don't know. So I would do a contingency.
I very.
Just my suggestion of those situations to.
Yeah.
Yeah, and you have the right to do that.
So then if we would still be meeting and the public has left, you can still rescind even though the person who may have been talking is gone?
Well, what would be the best proper way to deal something like that is not the rescind, it would be reconsider. Because that would bring it back to you and you can discuss it again. I would use the reconsider motion to bring that motion back for reconsideration. Vote on that and then the main motion is back in front of you. You can talk about it more.
So we can make a reconsider right now on that issue and put in the stipulation that if they cannot purchase, then the variance is not granted.
You can absolutely do that when I'm done with my presentation.
Oh, cool. Like that.
Let's not do it right in the middle of it.
Like that. No, but yeah.
But you can do it in the same meeting.
Exactly.
You can do it in the same meeting. You know, you're not affecting the person that was here, you know, don't feel like you're blindsiding him. Because you're reconsidering, you're just making a contingent. And if it doesn't get the property, you wouldn't want the variance out there and it doesn't affect.
Yeah, and he wouldn't want it either.
Yeah, and then your staff member, Mr. Faust, can convey that and share that, so.
Okay.
See, I was under the assumption, and that's why I didn't table it, because that came across my little brain. And I've seen things tabled and I guess they were tabled the wrong way.
Yeah, and I'm sure Mr. Faust would have said, you know, are you sure you want to use that motion versus the postpone or?
They never even.
Yeah.
Back.
Yeah.
Period.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, people are always using tables.
Right.
Right, they do.
Especially in council.
Yeah. Yeah. So see, this training is good discussion, is it not?
It's excellent.
Yes. So when you want to rescind, let's go back to this one and wrap it up. Any board member can make this. It doesn't matter how you voted to begin with.
Right.
Yeah. Anyone can do this one. But I'll tell you what, you can't rescind if we already bought the sign.
Oh, yeah. I follow that.
Okay. That makes sense, absolutely.
Yeah.
And then I have the example wording there for you, so.
People can read that?
Um, mine I can, yeah. If you would like a full page of these, you can have it, yeah.
I haven't made a fine glass at work.
Yeah, and I think we've armed Mr. Faust with the spreadsheet with all the motions and what they're used for and that, so he can kind of guide you through your meeting of which one would be the proper one. So let's go to incidental motions. Motion to withdraw, say, oh, I made the, I moved to buy the sign, not less than a hundred dollars. But then I'm like, oh, wait, no, I don't want to do that. I won't withdraw my motion. I can do that if no one has seconded the motion yet. So you got to withdraw before there's a second. But if someone seconds my motion, it's no longer mine, then it belongs to the whole board. Then I have no right to withdraw it on my own at that time. So what you want to do then, I would have to ask permission to withdraw because now it belongs to the board. So board members, I would like to withdraw my motion if I could have your consent. Chairman's going to ask, members, do we agree? Do we consent to that? Yes? Mm-hmm, okay. That'll be noted, full consent to withdraw the motion in your minutes. Yeah. Parliamentary inquiry is another one. Want to make sure you're doing the right procedure, that you're going in the right direction, thus my compass on there. And then point of order. If we're off the agenda here and we're in discussion and we get talking about something else, instead of the sign, we're talking about buying a bus, anything, I mean, that's the first thing came in my mind. If you get off track, someone's going to say point of order. That means, okay, come back together, get back on topic. You have to stay on topic of the motion that's before you. Don't want to get sidetracked. Privilege motions. Motion to recess for five minutes. That's privilege. Don't need a second. The chair can state that recess. Staff is going to note the time and the minutes. Come back to order. Okay, we're back into order. We reconvene. You're going to note the minutes and the time in the minutes and continue in your meeting. Motion to adjourn, that's one of your high-ranking motions. It's always in order. Not debatable. To adjourn. So are there any questions here at this point? I don't really think so. I'm going to have Deputy Clerk Chris Bolzmann come on up and she's going to talk to you a little bit on the next items. Just walk you through some.
She has four minutes.
No. Good tip, yeah.
Or less.
Oh, yeah, Jeopardy starts in a minute.
Yeah, yeah, we're almost done. We're going to wrap it up.
No, 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 I'm just kidding. I recorded.
Good evening, everybody. Just a couple items to go through quickly. Want to remind everybody that your meetings are on social media, pictures, video recording, so be careful what you're pulling on, poking on. It's available to the news media and it's broadcast on SGTV. Citizens don't always have the information that you have about your agenda items, so we just want you to keep that in mind. Listen to and follow legal counsel's advice or in your case, if Mr. Faust has something to offer as the staff person, you want to pay attention to what he has to say. Well, create, adopt, and follow your bylaws. You guys have already discussed that a little bit. Wherever possible, know the applicable public acts and be aware of the city's master plan.
We haven't seen the master plan in the last eight or nine years. We used to get one.
It's just a continuation of the other one, isn't it?
Yeah, they.
It has not changed since 2000.
It's the same one?
Okay.
Okay.
So we have the master.
And it is on what?
It's online and uses?
Okay. Ten principles to follow. Focus is on the issue on your agenda, not an individual. All members of the board are equal. Be professional and use titles. Commissioner Rosiglio, Commissioner Borchardt, things like that. A quorum must be present to take legal action. So anytime you make a motion, you have to have a quorum. You can still meet and discuss, you just can't take any action. Only one main motion can be under consideration at a time. Only one member can have the floor at a time, so just don't talk over each other. Discussion is allowed on motions and there are a few exceptions that Jan went over where discussion isn't allowed. After a motion is decided, it can come back in the same meeting or next meeting by use of reconsider, which you guys covered in some depth. A majority of the vote decides and there are a few exceptions where those two-third rules apply. Silence gives consent. If you don't say your aye, that means you consent. If you don't say anything. Rules for discussion. Motion maker is entitled to speak first. So the person that makes the motion, once the discussion comes up, they have the floor to start the discussion. Anyone that speaks must be recognized by the chair. Members must have a chance to speak once before someone speaks a second time. So as you go down the table, everyone has to have had a chance at least one time before it can come back to any one individual. Members may not speak against their motion but may vote against it. So if someone brings up a motion in their discussion, they can't speak against that motion. They can vote against it, but they can't speak negatively about their motion. Remarks must be confined to the merits of the motion, stay on topic. Members are not to speak directly to each other or staff. Maintain a professional and courteous tone. And again, use your professional titles.
Now you mentioned commissioner. Are we commissioner or board members?
Oh, board members.
Okay.
Yep, my mistake.
That's okay.
Mister and misses.
I just wanted to be sure.
Yep, yep. And the last slide is just a little bit about public service. Remind you that you have taken an oath. We have to remember teamwork makes the dream work. We have a couple little visuals there. And ethics, balancing out your ethics.
That's your session tonight for you. Thanks, good participation. I like the questions, feedback, that's good thought. That concludes our presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So now that she has illuminated us, do we have something to discuss on the reconsider? Go ahead.
I think it's a really good idea to make it contingent. I've thought about that even on other things, but seeing as I'm new, I didn't say anything.
Okay, so in other, in other words, would you like to make a motion to reconsider?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to reconsider, make it contingent on the sale, buying it from.
Purchase.
The purchase of it, yeah.
Store it, second.
All those in favor?
Any other?
Any other discussion?
I think you should go in more detail and talk about what the address is of the property.
Thank you.
Twenty twenty-six South Washington.
And also the case number, because we had two cases this evening.
Okay.
So you want to do your motion again?
It does say the number.
You got to say J eighteen.
All right. Case J eighteen zero 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 two. I'd like to make a motion that we, oh, shoot, you guys are putting me on the spot here.
You're doing fine.
Our, that we make it contingent on the purchase of the, of, from the.
I think the reconsider.
Reconsider.
Reconsider first, yeah.
If it's contingent, yes. But may interrupt your decision. All you're doing is asking to reconsider.
Then we vote on the reconsider. Yeah.
I think somebody else should probably make the motion.
You're fine.
You're fine. You've done fine. It's really.
If you reconsider the motion, you approve.
Okay. All right, I vote to, or I want to reconsider that motion.
Under the.
You still second?
Second.
Anybody else want to say anything on the issue?
I have a discussion. I think we need to put the case number and the address in the reconsideration of the motion.
I thought she didn't at the beginning and then.
No, I didn't give the address. It's two oh two six South Washington.
Okay.
I can take care of that in a minute, too.
Okay. So now that's the discussion, is there any other discussion? For the reconsideration, how do you vote? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Now we need a motion to.
Motion is approved to reconsider.
Recon, yeah.
So now you have that main motion that required.
Right, which we want to make contingent.
Amendment.
Right.
So you need another motion to.
Yeah. Right. So somebody want to make that?
Does it have to be Board Member Webb Jones because she made the, did you make the original? No.
No, I voted nay.
Who made? So does it have to be the original person who made the original?
No. Totally different.
So anybody can go ahead.
Can you see it?
I'm just, I need to go.
Everybody works without or with their glasses.
Chairman, would you like just to.
Sure.
If you want to go out of your regular order.
Yeah.
Not if you made a motion in front of you again. So you had that main motion, it's like, it was presented to you, it shouldn't be the motion.
Okay.
So the motion was to approve or agree.
For the variance at twenty twenty-six.
Other than options of voting that motion down or make a motion to amend it. Either way, if you vote, if you vote it down, then you make a new motion with your contingency for how you want it ordered and then vote on that one.
Okay.
You got to do something with this main motion person, it stands as it is unless you amend it.
Oh, okay. Amend is the same as?
Amend would be where you add your contingency.
Contingency, okay.
Vote on the amendment and then vote on the name.
Right. Okay, do I have any amendments to make to this motion or do I have a motion on the motion?
I have a mo, I make, I have a discussion. I feel like we should rescind the original motion and just make this new motion.
Is that a motion that you're making?
Yes. No, it's just a discussion of.
Okay.
It's just a point of order.
Anybody else want to discuss or make a motion concerning the main motion?
I think we just need to reconsider or amend it.
Amended.
Amended.
Amended?
Mm-hmm.
Do I have a second on that?
Second.
Any discussion on that?
What are you amending?
The main motion.
The main motion.
What you need to make. How are you amending it? This is where you put in.
We put in, okay.
Your contingency.
Go ahead.
I would make a motion that we amend case J eight zero zero two, twenty twenty-six South Washington, to make it contingent of the variance of the land purchased if the land is purchased. Or the variance to go with the property.
By the current owner of the property.
By the common.
By the current owner of the property.
Uh, do I have a second?
Second.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, now you have to vote on the motion with the, the amended motion.
Okay. Now we'll vote on the motion? I thought that was.
You voted on the amend.
Amendment, okay. Now we, we have to vote on the new amend, or.
You have to vote on the amended.
Amended motion.
Right.
Okay, do I have a, uh, do I have a recommendation of, uh? Do I have a motion on, on the amended ammo- uh?
No.
Main motion.
As it's amended.
As it's.
You're discussing how.
Right. So we're discussing that. Do I have a motion on the main? No.
You already had a motion.
We already had a motion.
You reconsidered it. You amended it, and you started a new motion.
So moved.
So, well, we have.
And I say so moved.
As amended, okay.
As amended, right.
And do I call for a vote now?
You can, if there's any less, there's further discussion.
Okay, is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So now it's rescinded or amended? It's not rescinded, it's amended. Boy, the words are tricky.
It's amended with that contingency.
Yeah, yeah. Beautiful.
Good job!
Not the words, it won't go further than.
For heaven's sake, is there any old business?
You still have a new agenda.
The officers.
Oh, we do with the officers.
Who are the officers now?
Uh, the, the chairman of the board is, is Board Member Gale. And the vice chair is... I believe it's, um... No, I think it's Board Member Help, after he's the vice chair.
Yeah, he is, he's, uh.
I think he was, he was there last year. You were vice chair?
Vice chair. Yeah, you were.
Yeah, you were.
You were.
I, did you?
It switched. It went George, George is off. He's him.
Yeah.
We should just put George back.
He's not here. We could put him back in. Okay, so, uh, do, do I have any motions on the election of officers?
Do you have any nominations?
Any nominations for the officers?
I nominate Mr. Gale's chair.
Second.
Any discussion other than me?
All those in favor?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Uh, motion for the vice chair? Or a, a nomination for the vice?
No, that was just, you didn't vote on that yet. You're just, you voted on the nomination.
Oh, nomination for vice chair?
But are there any other nominations?
Is there any other nomination?
You got to ask that three times, Tom.
Yeah? Please, is there any other nomination?
Can't hear you.
Can't hear me. Please, is there any other nominations for chairman? The nomination for chairman is closed?
Right.
Are there any nominations for vice chair?
We got to vote on chairman.
Oh, we do? I thought you had to do, okay. Uh, is there a motion to vote on the chairman?
Some will.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm stuck. Won't make it in June. I'm going to someplace. It's our, our anniversary. Uh, okay, now we need nominations for the vice chair.
I would nominate, uh, Ms. Webb.
Can't hear.
Ms. Webb?
I second that.
Is there any other, uh, discussion on that?
Are there any?
Are there any other nominations for vice chair? Are there any nominations for vice chair anymore? Will there be any other nominations for vice chair?
Excellent.
I move the nominations for vice chair be closed? At this point, do I call for a vote?
You, you got to have somebody.
Somebody make a motion?
Somebody to close the nominations.
Okay.
I made a motion to close the nominations.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Now we have a vote for the vice chair?
She says she's the vice chair.
She is automatically?
You got to vote on that again?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think so. Yeah.
The way they got these motions going.
You can't show this on TV. This one's got, you got to lose this one.
Okay.
Like that eighteen minutes of mixing, you got to lose this.
Do I have a vote on, uh, uh, our lovely lady, Ms. Webb, for vice chair? And do I have?
Yeah.
Okay, do I have a second?
Not second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Uh, the election is over?
Can we have to do secretary and just kind of refer to you?
No, we didn't do secretary. We haven't done it.
No, I, I think in the, in.
Right.
The ordinance that created you, I think I'm the secretary.
Right.
Oh, okay. Now can I bring up old business? Does anyone have old business to bring before the board?
I do. I'd like, um, I booked with the city ordinance as in it at the meeting and the master plan at the meeting. So we, we go by state statute. But it's always because, I'm saying this because somebody might not know if something comes up in that historical, um, area.
Okay.
Designated historic. It has to go before them. It should go before them before we vote on it.
Do, do we have access to what she's asking for?
Sure.
Okay.
And that's a standard procedure in case we have any questions, even though it's on the website. You know, most of us are computer literate, so we can go to the website. But then if we have it here and we might have missed something, you know.
Do, now, you have not made a motion. You are making a discussion.
Just a discussion.
Right.
Anybody else want to comment on this?
I think it'd be nice standard procedure for the zoning commission, you know, to have those available. So that when we table something, hmm, we can refer back to what the city ordinance and the state ordinance might differ, you know. We can refer back to that.
If the discussion is closed, do I have a motion?
I don't think.
I don't think you need a motion.
This is just discussion?
No, this is just something for me to bring.
Oh, okay.
Half of the time, it's.
Okay, yeah. Uh, public comment?
None.
I don't see any applause. Do I have a motion for adjournment?
Motion to adjourn.
Second? Anybody? Oh, she did. She raised her hand. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.